As we normally don't allow public comment for a work session, then probably don't need to announce that public comment can be sent to Barbara Ripley.
Right.
I don't see her here yet anyway, so. But I'll read the notice if we're ready to go. Okay, Rudy is here.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Oh, Rudy, yes.
There we are.
Okay, let's start our meeting. I'm going to read the notice. Notice the whole teleconference meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person to person contact due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Action of the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District on future meetings of the Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means. In accordance with Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one, members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. The link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. So after reading that, Rudy, do you want to take the reins?
Yes.
Awesome.
All right. Go into the correct spreadsheet. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So the first thing we'll just kind of cover, I'll walk you guys kind of a high level overview of the levy. The levy is something that we do every single year. The admin team, we decided that it would be a good, just to kind of give you guys an update where we are. Some of the things, kind of explain where the numbers come from. So when we go on Monday, you guys have all the details necessary to go ahead and set the levy to maximum, and we'll explain why we do that.
So right. Can you zoom in real quick?
Yep, absolutely. Okay. So just to kind of give you guys an update in terms of how we account for dollars, there's a big term called revenue recognition in the accounting world. It's when the money comes and we actually recognize it when, when we have it in our hands. There is three calendars that we look at, and look at when we look at levies. The first one is the county. The county pays levy based on calendar. So for them, their year goes from January to December. And every single year when we certify a levy, we actually are, we are actually certifying the levy for the dollars that are going to come the next fiscal year for a school district. So how does that compare to our calendar? Our fiscal year goes from July first to June thirtieth every year. So as you can see, there's always a little bit of an overlap, and I tried to identify that here. So for example, twenty eighteen payable twenty nineteen was actually recognized in fiscal year twenty. So that's how confusing it gets, but I just wanted to show you guys the complexity of that system. So a lot of the times, this is where I spend a lot of my time trying to make sure that we accrued the right dollars at the right time. So moving forward, the year that we just that we're about to certify, it's going to be it's going to be the levy for twenty twenty, twenty twenty payable twenty one, but we actually, we're going to recognize that, we're going to recognize that in fiscal year twenty two. So as you can see, when it comes to levy, I'm always looking at three years. And that's just something that as a good business manager, we're always working in three years, past, present, and future. So that's the timing. I'm not going to get deep into, into it, but just a lot of the times when you hear me talking about adjustments and things like that is because we're always backtracking. So what we really are going to spend a lot of time in is the levy. So the levy report is a report that we do every single year. And I'll show you guys just a little bit of what it looks like to give you an idea. So the levy certification report is seventy one, well, this year is seventy one pages long because the state made an error, but it really is about forty pages long. And it is just calculations upon calculations of everything that goes into our dollars. And so this is what we get from, from data, from our, from from, from our pupil counts to property, property evaluations by the county. And you just go line by line, and it ends up being about, well, it's about forty pages long that you kind of have to go through. Well, my job is, in early August, the state opens up the window where we go in and we have to clean up the data. We go into multiple facets where we have to provide the state with actual student counts. And then you go through many other things from county tax evaluations to many other, many other steps. That takes anywhere between one to three days to clean up all that data. You have to have everything in before August thirtieth, when the state, when the state says, okay, the window for the levy report is done. Then they go ahead and they run everything based on what you gave them. And you compare. So the state always wins unless you have good appeals and justifications. So they spit out the first report about a week ago, which is that seventy, seventy page report. And then you go in there and as a district, we have to go through every single line and make sure that the data that they're reporting is true, and if not, you have to dispute it. So we'll kind of go through it. So when we certify a levy, we get money for different funds. We get money for Fund One, Fund Four, and Fund Seven, and Fund Forty Seven. Fund One is the most important one. That's our general fund. That's where we pay all of our operations, where we pay all of our teachers, where we pay all of our administrative team. Community, Fund Four is community edit. This is where we run our, the majority of our early childhood program. And then Fund Seven is our debt service. This is our biggest one for us in terms of how we spread our levy. Because a lot of it has to do paying back the public debt that we have for issuing bonds. Then Fund Forty Seven, many, many years ago, the state gave school districts the authority to bond for post-retirement benefits. This is why you guys hear me talk about that OPEB benefit. That's what it is. Things that compute into the general fund. We have the new line that was added, which is the border approved operating labor referendum that we passed last fall. We obtained three hundred and fifteen dollars per pupil. That's, that's the caveat. It's per pupil. We went out to the public and we said, hey, we want to raise anywhere in the ballpark of about three hundred thousand dollars. Well, between, between last year and this year, our student count has gone down a little bit. That is why we're not receiving the three hundred thousand that we actually went out to the voters for. So did, just a little thing in terms of that. The other piece that when it comes to levy, we have the local optional revenue, short-term LOR. This was merged with the board approved three hundred that we had last year. And it was merged with the four twenty four that the state tells us that we normally as a district have before we can go out and get a, a public vote. So they merged those two together, and the new value now is seven twenty four. Why did they do that? Is because every, I believe it was every three or five years, the board had to pass a resolution to approve the board approved LOR. And many districts would forget to do that, and they were being penalized. So the state said, okay, enough is enough. We'll just merge it together. So now we have the new LOR of seven twenty four. We don't have to renew it. It's just there. And we get about seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from that. A little bit of an increase from the previous year. Then we have operating capital. Operating capital gives us the ability to, to allocate money, whether it's for any infrastructure needs, whether it's bricks and mortar, or whether it's technology, equipment. That's what operating capital covers. Cap facility bonds, we used to have an old, old, an old amendment to our levy that I tried to dig into, but essentially when we did the entire school project, we as a district gave away some of our levy dollars to help pay that, those bonds many, many years ago. That class is now exhausted, so which means that our general fund receives a little bit more dollars, and we don't now have to allocate so much to Fund Seven. So it's in our benefit, and I'm not going to dispute it with the state. I think it's appropriate. We have substantial funds in Fund Seven, which I'll get to in a little bit. Achievement and integration. So to add more to the complexity, the state has many formulas, and those formulas decide what, how much money is state aid and how much money is levy dollars. And they, and they call that equalization. So achievement integration is one of those programs that the state says, hey, it's a great program. Unfortunately, we can't fully fund it. Part of it has to come from your community dollars. We get about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for achievement integration, in which the state says two thirds of it is going to come from aid, the other third is going to come from, from property taxes. We, in terms, when, when they equalize it, we get about a hundred and, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in aid, and then about fifteen, fifty thousand dollars from taxes. You see that in my formula, the forty-nine thousand dollars that we should be getting from this aid are not there yet. And the reason why it's not there yet is because the state of Minnesota is significantly behind approving these programs. Achievement integration is something that we have to renew every single year. It's a grant that we have to continue to apply for. We submitted ours in March. And the state has not gone through them. And especially for us, we were one of the last districts to submit our application grant. It was after the passing of Dr. Richardson. So last time I checked, they were still reviewing it and not approved yet. Once it gets approved, we're going to receive those forty-nine thousand dollars, and our levy is going to go up a little bit more. So right now, you see the asterisk because I said, I submitted that appeal process. Reemployment, this was an adjustment that was done. So every year the county says, or I'm sorry, the state says, all right, we get it. As a school district, sometimes you have people that apply for unemployment, and they help cover some of those expenses. As an employer, you have to contribute to that investment fund. A lot of districts are getting adjustments, and they're getting adjustment because pandemic. We are one of those districts that we just didn't receive enough of that money. And the state said, hey, our unemployment fund is very depleted. If you're not using those funds, we're going to go ahead and adjust it. So out of the forty-six hundred dollars that we received last year, I only paid from the school district about five hundred dollars into the unemployment investment fund. But the state is saying, yeah, we give you a significant amount of dollars last year. We're going to probably give you an adjustment, and I give you that money because we desperately need it. So that is one of the adjustments that they did. Safe schools, great program, anything to help us improve from the mental health to air quality, we get it every single year. Last year, you guys remember that the state sent out a huge memo that said, hey, we have a surplus in safe schools. We're going to give schools an additional thirty, thirty thousand dollars. They now taken that away, and they're going to say you're going to get your historical traditional thirty-three. So we're fine with it. We'll take it. Career and technical. So any, when it comes to career and technical, this, the, the state reimburses us on a, a thirty, thirty-five percent of expenditures. So the more you spend, the more reimbursement you get, but you have, but it's very technical in the sense that only certain periods, I believe it's nine through twelve, qualify for reimbursement. So when we offer egg, when we offer woods, when we offer accounting and all that good stuff, that's what that, those, those tiers hit. We have very good, successful programs. We have to go through a validation process every single year, and we'll continue to do that. The other piece that goes into the general fund is the long-term facility maintenance program. This is another program that was a little bit of a headache a couple of years ago because it had so many adjustments. The adjustments again had to do with that construction project that we finished. We tied some of our LTFM dollars into it, and we didn't know why. In addition to paying that Capital One loan that we had no idea where it was coming from, after many calls, we determined that it was, it was, it was a loan that we took out for the purchase of the HVAC system at the high school and elementary. So those adjustments were, were there. The asterisk that you see again, it's an appeal that I submitted to the state, and I submitted it because they're giving us a forty-five thousand dollar adjustment, which means that we would normally get about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in LTFM, but they're saying they're, that they want to take forty-five thousand dollars, and I submitted an appeal to understand why. The why is, five years ago, we submitted a, a, a special project when LTFM was new, to remove the asbestos at the elementary. It was a project that was going to cost us a hundred and forty thousand dollars over three years. We completed that in two years. So the state was searching for the expenses for the third year, and they didn't find any. So they said, hey, we gave you guys a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We think that you didn't use it up. So they were trying to pull the money from our levy, and I said, no. We actually finished it early, but we do have the expenses. So I submitted this massive spreadsheet explaining everything, and they told us, yeah, you guys are right. We're going to fix it on our end. So that, we're going to get our hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars unless I hear otherwise. So, so again, that appeal process. Community ed, community ed, we get sixty-one thousand dollars for community ed. This runs everything in our community ed, from our classes to our open gym to paying for the administrators to help coordinate this program. We also receive ECFE dollars that help a lot of our early childhood programs. And we also receive an additional grant for that home visitation piece. One thing that we started doing is we started applying for, or levy and for school H care. This is the special, if we have any kids that have an IEP in club bikes, we can actually levy for this, and a lot of our students have them. So every year we certify how many of those kids, if you have even just one kid in the program that has an IEP, you levy for those dollars. And we have that every year, so we take advantage of it. It really helps us set the rates to help parents not have a very big childcare bill, and it just helps us run a program that is very successful. Other thing that this helped at the end of last year, after we offered, excuse me, after we offered free childcare to first response workers mandated by the state, it helped us not bring community ed fund into a negative, and I'll highlight that in my final piece. Then we go into Fund Seven. This is where the majority of our levy dollars go to, and again, it helps us pay back that debt that we issue. The first piece is the one point five million dollars. That is that building bond that we took out for about, I believe it was twenty-seven million dollars that we will have to pay back. The other piece is long-term debt, uh, long-term, long-term facility maintenance debt that we have. Those were everything, any bonds that we had for any, any construction project prior to the big one that we're still have, having to pay out. OPEB debt, we are now completed with it. All, I believe, all the teachers that qualify for that sunset class have now retired, and we, and we helped them retire this spring. So all of our teachers that would take advantage of this benefit have now retired. We're going to sunset this fund eventually at the end of this fiscal year, and then we'll pay their benefits, and we should no longer have OPEB. And it will also be removed from our master agreement next spring when we enter negotiations again. Well, that's a little bit about levy. As you can see right now, in terms of the majority of the dollars that we're certifying, it would be down sixty-eight thousand dollars. The reason why it's down sixty-eight thousand dollars, again, it's due to two adjustments. One, LTFM for that forty-five thousand dollar adjustment, which I've already submitted an appeal for. They told me, the state told me, yeah, Rudy, you're right. You're going, we're going to go ahead and, and adjust on our end. And then the other one is the achievement and integration adjustment where the state has not approved our, our plan because they are behind. So once those two pieces get completed, we should actually have about, I believe it was about four million and forty thousand dollars, so up from, up from the previous year. Other things to note, this is a good sign in terms in our area is our market value went up from one point eight billion dollars to one point nine billion. The tax rate has gone down a little bit from twenty percent to eighteen percent, and that has to do with a little bit of the adjustment, so that will settle. But again, it's, it's, it's good. Property values are going up. A little bit more money goes into, into our school funding. Things that we have to do coming up, so on next Monday's board meeting, we're going to have to set the levy to the maximum. Why do we do that? We do that because between now and December, all of these numbers change, and they change based on pupil adjustments. It changes based on anybody that wants to dispute any of their taxes. It changes if the state changes any of the formulas. So they change about every week or so, and we get updated levy reports. The final numbers, you will see them on the, on the December board meeting where all, where I'll say this is the final report, and it's ready to go. And, and again, we said, we say maximum because if you say a dollar number, that's it. We're locked in. And we do not want to do that because if the state comes out and says, hey, you know what? We've made an error. You guys should be getting an additional million dollars. We can levy for it because we set a number. So we always say maximum. That's where that comes from. Then, um, then we'll do our truth and taxation. Again, that's in December board meeting. Anybody that has any questions, we will always, the majority of the time, if, if I can answer them, I'll answer them. But if it's relating to the calculation of how their property taxes are computed, we cannot answer those, and we have to send them to Otterdale County or their, their county and how that comes to be. And again, if anybody has any questions regarding that, I always forward them to me, and then I'll answer it to the best of my knowledge, and then send it back to you guys. Questions about the levy process?
No, I don't hear any, Rudy.
All right, perfect. Thank you. So things to note, we always levy for the maximum. Anything changes, I will inform you guys. As soon as I hear back from the appeals, I'll let, I'll let the team know. And property values go up. It's in our favor. And, and write to your senators so they can make those nice lake cabins taxable. CARES Act, the team kind of asked me to give you an update on this. If you guys are hearing that we might be spending money, we are, and that is because it is money that is intended for a specific reason. At the beginning of the pandemic, between the federal government and the state issue the CARES Act, the CARES Act was comprised of three functions. The first piece is the Corona, Coronavirus Relief Fund. The second one is gear, which is kind of the governor's executive order, and then the last one is ESR, and I can't remember what the acronym stands for, my apologies. As you can see, each one comes with different entitlements. The first one, the Coronavirus Relief Fund comes with two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars tied behind it. The caveat on that one is that we have to spend that money down between December thirty, before December thirty first. After that, we cannot expense anything anymore. So as an admin team, as we've been having a lot of meetings and trying to figure out the best way to allocate those dollars, the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, I have it broken down per area of focus. Out of the, out of the two sixty-eight, we're going to spend ninety-seven thousand dollars in elementary, ninety-seven thousand in secondary, thirty-six in pupil support, twelve thousand dollars in transportation, and then twenty-five thousand dollars in sites and building. When we deep dive even a little bit further down, and we try to figure out what goes in here, the best, the best thing that we're going to spend our money on in each building is all the additional para expenses, whether it's hiring an additional para because we need to keep our, our, our class ratio down, or because some students are having to be distance learning, and the T, or the teacher is distance learning because of special accommodations due to health reasons, and we need a para still in that classroom, or even in the, in the event that we have to hire a Spanish teacher and they're teaching remotely. All those expenses qualify for that. So any additional para time, we're coding here. The other thing that we ran into in terms of an admin team is, we just didn't have any subs. The majority of our subs, not just in Pelican, but in the surrounding area, were retired teachers that were of age. And one of the things that we learned in this pandemic is the most vulnerable people during the pandemic is our elderly. So a lot of our substitutes do not want to come in. That forces us to hire two full-time substitutes to keep in the building as a front line of defense. If a teacher is out because they're ill, or because of personal reasons, or because they have to quarantine, those two teachers or those two subs are the first ones there that we call, we call to. And we're going to keep them in our payroll for the hundred and forty-five school days because we need them. And all of their salary and fringe benefits qualify for that. The other thing that we're doing for each building to make sure that we use up those two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is any supplies that we need, whether it's, whether it's, it's about PPE or health reasons, or just supplies, we can code to this. They help. The other thing that we're doing is instructional supplies. A lot of our teachers, whether they have a textbook and they're changing to an online platform, those are qualifying COVID expenses because it's something that we had to do to make accommodations for the way we teach. Then the last piece that we're doing for billing is we are, we're allocating about twenty thousand dollars for equipment. This is going to help our teachers be more functional in their classroom, whether it's a Permethium bore, whether it's a, a high-definition camera so kids can hear them, whether it's improvement to the sound quality, all of those are COVID-related expenses. So that's what we're doing per building. Questions on how we're going to spend the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars? The next two, the next two pieces of the CARES Act, which is gear, the first one comes with forty-one thousand dollars, and then the other one comes with a hundred and ninety-six tied to it. Those, we have a little bit more time. We have until December thirty first of twenty twenty-two to spend them down. As an admin team, we have an idea what we might do, but we haven't really explored it. We have enough time to really sit down and figure out what our needs are going to be. One of the ideas that we have is that we are desperately in need of filling that technology gap in terms of whether it is a, a secondary technology roof refresh and kind of finalizing implementing our one-to-one. Those dollars are eligible to help cover that need. Again, we don't have anything concrete because we have, we have the gift of time. Mr. Cork not quoting me on the last piece. Again, that, that's all the information that I have for the, for the last two, two pool of funds is, is, as an admin team, we're still trying to as an admin team, we're still trying to figure out what to do there. So, so the reason why I gave that long speech is because we are gonna be spending money, but it's gonna be money that is not going to hit our bottom line in, in our operational budget. So whether we hire that additional para or a full-time sub, know that all of their expenditures are already accounted for and it's not going to hit our fund balance. Okay? Questions regarding CARES Act? All of the three applications have, have been submitted. And today, we actually got an email saying that they've been reviewed and approved and the grant is fully funded. So it's up to us to go ahead and pull the monies so we can go ahead and, and, and have a hold of them and then I'll do the accounting behind it. But it's good to know that we've been approved. That's what I had for levy, that's what I had for CARES Act. We'll go ahead and we'll dive straight into budget and preliminary audit. One of the things that I've been tasked with is to provide you guys with the most truthful and transparent financial information. Okay? Last May in twenty eighteen, when we adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty budget, we presented this picture to you guys. We said, hey, if we don't get our ducks in a row here, we might be looking at a ninety-nine thousand dollar fund balance. That's a one percent. And I remember you guys, I, I, I know a majority of you guys remember that conversation. It was a scary thing to, to forecast. But what was behind that forecast? Negotiations. Because we don't know what we're gonna end in negotiations, we always forecast expenses more than revenues. That is just a tactical strategy that any good business manager does. And we're gonna continue to do that because we don't know how we're going to settle. After negotiation settled and we updated the budget in April, and we did informally a budget where I came to the board and said, hey, we need to, we need to uh, accept the new, the new budget. I just give you guys an update based on what the actual numbers after negotiations were gonna look like. And at that point in time, we were projecting a five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar fund balance, which was really good because it meant that we were not going to have any staff reductions. It also meant that the following fiscal year, we were going to uh, take in the new operating levy referendum dollars, which was gonna increase our fund balance at the, at the end of the projected fiscal year twenty-one. But then pandemic came. And what that meant was that after the preliminary audit numbers came through, our revenues were significantly larger than our expenditures because our year was caught a little bit short. A lot of those operating expenses, we didn't longer have. So we save money on transportation, we save money on activities, we save money on food costs and many other things. And what that meant for us is that we ended up contributing about six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to our fund balance. So going, and again, these are preliminary numbers that are still subject to change if the auditors find anything else. But right now, we are projected to end our fund balance at one point one million dollars. That is twelve point two percent, you guys. You guys should be standing up and clapping because we are in, we are in merits in terms of our board policy. It states that we need to have between ten to thirteen percent. This is huge, you guys. We went from projecting a one percent to being in policy. This is something for you guys to go home tonight, sleep well, and know that you guys are doing a darn good job. And we know that it has not been easy. And the road is only gonna get harder because maintaining that is harder than putting a strategy to get us to where we need to be. So the road is not going to get any easier, you guys. We have to be extremely fiscal vigilant about everything and always address any budget shortcomings immediately. But know that the projected, the projected numbers for the end of fiscal year twenty look very favorable. And I don't know the last time we were in policy, honestly. So that's what I have for you guys. I'll stop now and if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Rudy, I attended the MSBA ball meeting. They have the updates for like, what might be coming legislative next year. I'm guessing you maybe have more better information than I do.
Yep.
And then they also talked about property taxes also. I didn't quite understand that, it kind of went over so quickly that. You know what that means?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that we have to be very vigilant of. So the first one is through this whole pandemic, unfortunately, our state is not in the best financial means, which means that it's gonna, any public works is going to be impacted. And a lot of the times, a public education tends to be on their agenda. So what that means for us is that in the next biennium, most likely, our funding formula is going to freeze. But when I talked about that the road's only gonna get harder, that's what I meant is the funding formula is projected to freeze for the next two years. In addition to the state started paying already on an eighty, twenty percent versus their traditional ninety, ten. That means that normally they would pay us ninety percent and then withhold ten percent in receivables and then they pay you within the following year. Well, they now dropped that to eighty, twenty. Having a good fund balance helps you cover those shortfalls. Excuse me, I'm gonna put up another report that uh, that we uh, provided you guys, which is our cash flow. Just to give you an idea for how important the having a fund balance is. So this is our entire year forecasted of monies coming in and monies leaving the district. And I broke it down on a, on a bi-weekly projected period, so you understand the monies that, the monies that we started with. What the state pays us is everything in green plus levy and then the expenditures that the district normally has. So if you look through our entire cash flow projection, the lowest, the lowest point that we're gonna have in terms of cash on hand, that is hard cash, it's gonna be one point six million dollars versus nine thousand dollars two years ago. Do you guys remember me making a huge deal at a board meeting, talking about nine thousand dollars cash on hand? We're now, the lowest point is gonna be one point six. That is very comfortable spot to be in. That means we don't have to worry about paying our teachers, our administration. That means that we can actually let teachers buy paper clips. That's how important the fund balance is. So uh, John, to your question is, yeah, hard times are gonna come. Funding formula is gonna be frozen, most likely. They're gonna probably, the state is gonna, already started paying us at an eighty, twenty percent. And you see those right here, they didn't pay us anything in July. And they're also not gonna pay us anything in November. But we have now the reserves to help us meet those, those, those dry periods. In terms, when it comes to the federal funding, and I think I heard you say that they said that there's a lot of qualifying and non-qualifying expenses. Yes, because they're federal dollars, they're very articulate in terms of what qualifies, what doesn't qualify. So when we wrote up the plan, we actually put a budget together. We submitted it to the state and they go line by line to understand if that is a qualifying expense. The other caveat that they have is that if there's anything, one unit, whether you're buying, when, when you're buying equipment or supplies, if there is one item that is over five thousand dollars, you need special approval permission. I, I don't know what we're gonna buy that is more than five thousand dollars. You know, if you think about even a per medium bore, I think they're like seven, eight hundred dollars. So we're, we'll be okay. There is special guidelines if you're gonna buy, if you're gonna use the coronavirus relief money for transportation. And, and it's mainly tied to, if you're thinking of buying, if you're thinking about buying a bus or if you're thinking about buying a school vehicle, we're not doing either. So there was no need for me to complete that application process. The, the silver lining on those federal dollars is that if it is a new expense, that in the event that COVID was not here and the expense was still there, it would not qualify. But if the pandemic is here and the expense is here, then therefore it qualifies. But yeah, it has not been easy applications, but luckily we got them approved. And we can amend those budgets for those federal dollars every, every three months, every quarter. So they're not set in stone. Great questions, John, thank you.
Rudy, you wanna talk about school ventures and the funding?
Yeah, absolutely. So we got a really good memo from the state of Minnesota that said, hey, we have additional federal dollars that we don't know what to do from our lunch program. You guys have until December thirty-first to offer free lunches during the summer food program. So when you think about when the pandemic hit us on March eighteenth and we had to close schools down, we went from operating our normal school lunch program to the summer food application. Through the president and the governor, the, and USDA, they extended the, the summer food program to say, hey, you know what? We get that everyone is very, very uh, stretched thin here, rather than finding which meals qualify for reimbursement. Under the summer food program, you guys can just do a, a, a tally sheet or a click count and that's what you'll get reimbursed for. So rather than sitting there and understanding, okay, this student is full paid, reduced or free, and then you get different reimbursement rates. The MBE said, just claim everything, the summer foods, and you'll get, you'll get about ninety percent reimbursement back. So it's a very streamlined process. And again, it's backed up by USDA and federal dollars. And, and it actually, it, it, it was to our benefit. So if you look at our fund too, which is our food service fund, I projected that we were gonna get five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We ended up making a little bit more and it had to do because of that. And expenditures again were significantly, significantly low in our food service fund, so we're doing pretty good. Right here. So we projected we're gonna have five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in expenditures. We ended up having only four hundred and eighty-three. So our food service fund is doing great. The memo came in the middle of August, letting administrators know that there were, were additional federal monies where we could offer free lunch to all students again, regardless of student lunch status. And you know, through many meetings and, and submitting applications, we got the okay to go ahead and continue to extend free lunches for all of our students, pre-K through twelve, regardless of their educational model, in-person, hybrid or distant, and regardless of their lunch status, full paid or reduced. Which in our community, that's a gift, any community really. So that's why we have, again, application has been approved. We, we got the green light to go and we made the announcement on the second day of school. And hey, it's, it's, what can I say? For me, administratively, running, running the program that way, it's much better. We don't, again, we don't have to do as twice the work and it's more streamlined. Other questions regarding the food service? If funding, if funding finish, if funding gets exhausted before December thirty-first and the state sends out, sends out a memo saying that it's gonna be cut short, we'll immediately work with administration and the right, the right platforms to announce to the community that we're now going to go ahead and go back into the traditional food service model where we start charging based on your lunch application. There was a, a memo that, that we put in our announcement saying that you still have to complete those lunch applications because it is extremely important for, for compensatory revenue that we get. Compensatory revenue takes into account poverty levels to ethnicity and demographics. And, and with, with a very complex formula, they give us additional money. So it's very crucial that parents still submit that lunch application. We get additional funding to help us, to help us where those, where those just your regular funding formula doesn't need those, those extra needs for students. Well, that's the only, the only thing that we have. Other questions that you guys have regarding the school lunch or any of the preliminary, preliminary, preliminary numbers regarding the audit?
Rudy, with school lunch, do they just, do they have to sign up for the free meals regardless of income or is it just no charge? Get a plate?
Yep, so at the moment, there's no charge regardless of parents' income. As long as they're a student in our district, they can come pick up a meal. In terms of operations behind it, there is a, a, a survey out there of Google Doc that if you are distance learning or you're hybrid at home and you're gonna pick up lunch that day, you go on it and then you tell our staff and then at the time that your lunch is, you come and you pick it up and your lunch is, is served and ready for you to take home. So, so yeah, any, any student of the district, you know, go ahead and take advantage, get a nice warm meal.
Okay, thank you. Question? I don't hear any questions, Rudy.
All right, well, thank you, you guys, thank you so much again. I, from, from my perspective, I, I can't thank you guys enough for being so supportive in this last two years. And uh, you know, hard work pays off, so thank you all. I know it was hard and I'm, I'm not gonna say it was easy. But you know, today, I think we can all go home and say, hey, we did a darn good job. So thank you, guys, thanks so much.
Appreciate your hard work too. Okay. Next up, we'll review the first week. Right, and show me, you're gonna go to our. And just a review of the first week of school. Few things, both enrollment right away. Here's enrollment K through six, we have four hundred and thirty-three students and seven, we have four hundred and twenty-two, so we have total eight hundred and fifty-five students. K twelve, at the high school, just pull down a little bit. The learning model that we're in right now is hybrid. And right now, we have forty-three students that are choosing the whole distance learning. At the, at the high school, elementary, they're in person. And right now, they have ninety-three students doing distance learning at this time, which we started with about a hundred and twenty. And through the course of the back-to-school meetings and things, we have a twenty-five switch in person from originally being distance. So those few things, protocols here, at the high school and elementary, we have the thermal cameras. We have cameras, we have one right out here, we, we enter the door here right above, so it takes the temperature one, one there, and then elementary has one, so they can like have like thirty students coming through and it can get their, their temperature. If anyone has a hundred degrees or above, send an email to the office staff. And then the office staff can pull up students and then bring to the office and then do more of a check.
Yes, we had a class after recess the other day.
Yes, we had a class after recess the other day and they came in. And also we got an email with picture, you know, when the kids are on the line and picture the one kid with the red box around. And so one went down, brought the kid down and retested him. And his temperature was back to normal, so they were outside playing or whatever, so he was a little hot. And so at that time, kid got down there, it was like five minutes later and we tested, he was back pretty healthy, so. Interesting to see, you know, the pictures that we got of the class coming in and they could identify that person that was involved.
And the things that we're doing is hand sanitizers, we have hand sanitizer at each entrance. And at right where they enter in the lunchroom. And then all classrooms, all teachers are after each, in high school, after the class was done, at fifth grade, you can spray down the desks and sanitize them. Students spaced out in the classrooms and doors are removed from the bathroom. So let me see that contact in the door handle. Having at the high schools, students have backpacks right now. Let me see, then a lot of time they go to their locker. Anything else, all hallways, you go in the highest floor or here, you can see everything on the floor. Are we, one direction, in between classes, before school, they can go in any hallway, any direction. But once we start school, then they have to go one direction, just so everyone's facing the same way. At lunch, we have two lunches at the high school. Students are spaced out, we have three different areas that we have in that lunch. Socially distance and then facing one way.
Elementary, right now, we have, where they're sitting on one side of the table. We have five kids at a table. And kindergarten, first, second, and sixth grader eating cafeteria. Third, fourth and fifth are in their classrooms. And that should be timing, when one class is done, they leave all the tables, get wiped down clean, and the next class will be.
Any questions, concerns on protocols? And the county case rates, just pull down this little bit down. It's best, they warned us that was going up in our last number, last big thing to find one that's eleven point nine. And they think right now they're seeing this gonna be high here for the next week or two. So I don't see the number going down this, I mean. Hopefully it goes down after this. So if you go back up, Mr. Simmons, go back up. You know, right now, we're kind of sitting really well with what we're doing right now. So they're saying with ten to less than twenty, elementary's in person, middle, high school will be in hybrids. So eleven point nine, we're right there. Okay, so going into the air, there's concern with, you know, if we go to distance or anything with that, what's gonna happen with activity? Food, sports, the math team, plays, things like that. So scroll down to the last page, the union has talked to us about an MOU that's coming here. Something that we want to talk to you about tonight. So then if we were bringing forward at the next, for me, next Monday, we've kind of already discussed this. So what they would like to do is, and what we talked about both sides, is that all coaches and advisors would be paying two thirds of their salary if the season's canceled. So if they go day one and their season's canceled, or two weeks, their season's canceled, there'd be two thirds of their salary. That would be for all coaches and advisors. If they complete, all coaches and advisors complete more than fifty percent of their season, then they would get full, a full cost. And then next one is all the late compensation will be paid at the conclusion of the season. So right now, it looks like what's being planned by the state high school league is that, for example, volleyball and football have a few weeks here in the fall, and then again in the spring. This, what we like to bring forward on next Monday, or being wondering if there are any concerns? If it's canceled, even before the season starts, they would, with this right here, they'd be paying two thirds of the salary. But you know, we appreciate our coaches and advisors are hard to find, and they do a lot of when it's not a season that they're in there. All the things in the summertime, all the connection, and even during the time, let's see, their seasons connect, a lot of them stay in contact with their, with their athletes or their students, more cootin', contacting them, and which I feel is crucial for them to know. Some are doing where, some are paying full, some are paying less. This will be for this year, but this school year, in the pandemic, this school year only. This MOU would be for this school year. We'll say twenty. Yeah, I see what you said, that should be twenty-one.
Of staff and students, they may be able to handle the masks. We talked in my, in the building, in the building, in this school building, very well. At the high school, they handled it very well on the changes. I think we all know that they're not allowed the masks, but we're gonna try and. Things good, we just had a couple accidents. One kid grew up and a couple bloody noses. But that's why we have the extra mask, and they've done a great job to keep them on. Teachers have done also a great job of using the time to get outside. Those, they have different spots that are people where they can go out, get six feet away so they can take off their mask to get a leak, things like that. So get them outside, different kinds of kids that are there, it's been good, so.
Were they all the same size? Does this debate on me? So just curious if they were all like a one size fits all, that was given to the school?
There were smaller ones, yeah. So they should ask for a smaller one. We have, right now. We have quite a few masks, so we'll just forget.
More concerned about the ones that you.
And Jordan, the high school kids at the high school hall, of the room. The one thing, Sherry Willis and Santos said, oh, like they may be outlining the greater ones. But nothing is official yet. Talking about possibly aligning the greater ones before. They say they're not picking up closely, so, but nothing yet has been changed, but they're probably. I do overall, first week went well, now I'm most. Any other questions? Buckets down, okay, questions down, well, this week preparing preschool, I think is what Paul told me. So that might, might have to do a few adjustments with the times. But Paul said, we want to, well, the new drop off system, like we're going to preschool. It's done very smoothly, so they've installed the parents and the bus drivers and while it's stressed on them being before, they have kids running in front of the bus and, and then we're separating them as they come in to the building. So we have two different entry spots, but. Also, we have. Did I talk quick about sports? So cross country and soccer are going on. Everything has gone well, we haven't had anything postponed. We do have cross country, the third day at home here, a second one, and first one went really well. We start up on the playground of the elementary. They go around the baseball field and softball fields and the other side of the track and end up dancing on the track. We're using a timing system, so it gets up on the scoreboard the results, which is pretty cool. So fun for the kids who are telling us, oh, my name is on the scoreboard, so. They, there is a meeting at the high school tomorrow, a group is meeting about trying to beat football and volleyball possibly starting here. So we'll see what the results of that meeting are. So football, volleyball are in their three week practice period where they can start practice this week. So we'll see what happens tomorrow. Right now, trust and playoffs, they're in the fall, are they being scheduled? There's nothing scheduled yet, they've got nothing on our trust country and doctor playoff schedule and these. So try and work out some of the videos. Their meeting at the high school. No idea, okay. Because, yeah, what I was told before, they were gonna have all the fall sports. And then the next day, they went meeting and it all changed, so. Who knows? Getting life, so.
John, just a couple reminders, the MSBA and MRA meetings virtually. It's an opportunity for you to give input on their legislative platforms. I think MRA's meetings are this week, and I think MSBA is the next week, but you can go to their websites. We had a policy, policy committee earlier today, so we will have four policies to, for the board to consider next Monday. And that's all I have.
Have we, have we heard anything back from the board yet?
I'll find out more this week.
Rudy, do you have anything before we adhere?
Nope, we're good to go.
Well, thanks, everybody.